Testing three, two, one. Testing, three, two, one. Testing, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Testing. Test, test, testing. Councilmember Stewart, if you can hear me, can you turn on your camera so we know that this is working at least?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much, sir. Can you give me a microphone check by chance?
Um, yeah.
Thank you. Perfect. Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Let me get my minutes and we'll...
Absolutely. After the roll call. About me after the roll call. Good evening and welcome to October 20th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Ken Truex, Elder at the East, Independence Church of Christ. Please stand for the invocation and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for who you are and what you do for us. I pray that you bless...
The... I pray you bless our country that we live in and the city that we live in. I pray that you be with our country in many ways. Our world, our country's in a tough time now. And so I pray that you just bless those, the leaders, and those who are acting significantly, especially those who are acting in bad ways. I pray that good stuff will happen. Father, tonight I want to pray for the mayor and the council. I pray that their deliberations and the decisions they make tonight and over the next month will be good. And I pray for those decisions. I pray for good working relationships amongst the council so that good outcomes can come for all of the citizens. Father, I always pray for the city senior staff and all the employees and volunteers and the work that they do. I thank you for their work and I pray blessings on them as they go about their tasks. I pray especially, Father, for the first responders of our city, the police, firefighters, EMTs, and those that serve us in these special ways. I pray you bless them. I pray you protect them especially as they go about their duties. Father, I also want to pray for those who will be coming before the council tonight. I ask that they are able to communicate clearly what they want to say. I pray that they'll be understood and that everything will be done in a good way. Finally, Father, I want you to bless everyone in our city. I want to pray especially for those who are struggling with their health or with their... and their families, for those that are grieving, for those that are struggling in all kinds of ways. I pray that you be with them and that the aspects of the city, the things that the city does, will be a blessing for them. So, Lord, I ask your blessings on all of these things and it's in Jesus's name I pray.
I plead petitions to defy the United States of America and to a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Elder Truex, I want to thank you for the invocation. Excellent job. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vought?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. And Councilmember Fears, you've asked for a moment of personal... point of personal privilege. Please proceed.
I would. Thank you very much. I want to welcome Troop 173 to... Scout Troop 173 to be with us tonight. This is actually my scout troop and they are here. All of these boys are here working on their citizenship in the community merit badge. And I happen to be their counselor for that. I'm not sure whether that's good, bad, or otherwise. But nevertheless, we're going to go back after this. We're going to go back to the church and eat some pizza and discuss what we talked about tonight. So it'll be a good evening.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. That brings us to resolutions and a Citizens Academy graduation presentation. And interim city manager Reynolds, how should we proceed on this one?
Rebecca. Rebecca, our communications manager and our Health and Animal Services Director are here and have helped and... yeah, am I missing anybody? No. John's here too. And John Mayfield have helped put this program together and are all here this evening to assist with the presentation for graduation.
Come on.
We will make this very brief. They've all already received their certificates and I know they've had a chance to talk with you guys. We would just like to welcome them to stand so you guys can see them and thank them for coming. They have learned so much over the last few weeks and we've really enjoyed having them here. So if you guys would like to stand?
Thank you. Thank you.
I wasn't originally going to say anything because I don't have a face made for radio. However, I want to publicly thank Mr. Cooper for taking out his car as a rat and driving very, very fast when I don't tell the police officers in the back. But it would have made my late father, who was a race car driver, very, very proud. So thank you very much, Mr. Cooper. And thank you for all coming and putting up with us and I hope you learned something about local government.
Well, thank you all for going through the program. I know you learned a lot. We talked just before the meeting and I had the opportunity to ask you some questions, things you learned. And the things that you found most interesting were the drones from the police officers. Officer Bishop is very, very proud of his drones. And the other thing that I heard from most of you with regards to how interesting it is that we have bugs in the sewer system that actually chews up all of the waste so that we can then put it back into the rivers. And so... and one of you said that without the bugs, we'd be... have a lot of doo-doo around City Hall. So that was it. Probably more information I probably should have shared. With that being said, congratulations for that. All right. With that, we have a citizen's request tonight and it is Tom Gibkin. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Tom, please proceed and you've got five minutes.
Okay. Council and mayor, thank you. My name is Tom Gibkin and I'm the president of CWA Local 6360, the Communications Workers. And we represent the 911 dispatchers here in the city of Independence. And you guys are going to have to make a decision or think about some stuff today about picking up Sugar Creek. And so I just want to tell you about our wonderful dispatchers that take care of Independence. So they go to work and every call is... they have no idea what that call is going to be. It could be my neighbor's music is too loud. My neighbor's dog is barking. My husband has collapsed on the floor and he's turning blue. I need help now. It could be my son is mad and he's gone into his bedroom with a gun and he has closed the door and locked it. I need help. I see a bad car wreck, a fire. We've even had one dispatcher get a call going, I have a noose around my neck and I'm standing on my deck and I'm going to jump off. And that person was able to... don't make a permanent solution to a temporary problem. And by the time... in a few minutes, he got... that person got the help they needed because of the skills of the dispatcher. So to be fully staffed in Independence, you'd have 28 dispatchers. Right now, we have 14. We have five in training. If you pick up Sugar Creek, you're going to add 18,777 non-emergency calls. And I don't know how many emergency calls you get. Now, our dispatchers are skilled. They're able to do this work. But we don't... as we make our decisions today, we need to consider that they have all the tools they need and that they have everything they need to make it successful. So if you guys haven't reached, you know, made the full decisions that they're fully ready to do it, then maybe put it off a little bit to make sure that these dispatchers can do the work that they're going to be asked to do, take care of the citizens of Independence, take care of the new citizens of Sugar Creek that they'll be looking after and not have any road bugs. So make sure that you, as a council, do what you need to do to make sure they can do what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I move for approval of the reports or recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Sir.
We've got a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything else for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull number four, please.
Number four. Thank you very much, Councilmember Perkins. Anyone else? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item number one.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless has requested item number one be pulled. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Resolution number 25794.
Which is resolution number one. But Councilmember Fears, number one, 25794. Anyone else? Other items to be pulled for consideration? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda passes seven in favor. Zero opposed. This brings us to item number four. Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. We've got a motion for item number four for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for item number four. Councilmember Perkins, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. So for this action that we're taking here, so this is the council action requesting to authorize the city manager to execute a design service contract and issue a purchase order to do three different bridges. Kentucky Avenue Bridge over Rock Creek, Arlington Avenue Bridge over Rock Creek, and also RD Mize over the Little Blue River. So these are exciting projects. This is more work that is being done from our GeoBond that we passed last April. So a big thank you to our citizens that took the risk and trust in us that we were able to do the work that we said that we will do. One of the highlights of the Kentucky Avenue Bridge work that we're getting ready to do here with the design is this bridge has been out for five, six years. So we're taking one giant leap for mankind slash independence, getting that bridge done. So thank you for indulging me.
No, thank you, Councilmember. And if I may say, just follow up on that, I'm delighted this project's being done because I've got to tell you, if there's anybody that's been an advocate for this bridge to be fixed, it's been you. So I think all the council would agree with me on that. If they've heard anyone talk about Kentucky Avenue Bridge, it has in fact been you. So your constituents know you've been fighting for them on that. You've been diligent on that and so...
It's been a full court press, for sure.
Absolutely. And so from a selfishness standpoint, I'm decided... I'm excited that this is getting done. So...
Me too.
Very good.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else? Other discussion on item number four? But these are exciting projects and thanks to the GeoBond. Anyone else? Further discussion? Seeing none? All right. Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number four.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
A robust yes. I'm so happy this is getting done, too. Item number one, Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I move approval of item number one.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and we've got a second. Very good. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you very much. I hear an awful lot about homelessness in Independence and it takes many, many, many different approaches to address that issue. It turns out that one of the fastest growing populations for homeless in the United States are people over the age of 65 and people with a disability. So I am especially happy that we have these CDBG funds. These are federal funds that come to local levels for being dispersed appropriately in the community. These are the Community Development Block Grants. These funds are going to go to Truman Habitat for Humanity. They use them to help stabilize people in their homes. They do moderate home repairs. They put in shower benches. They modify plumbing so people can stay in their home. Some people have trees that come through the roof, but they haven't had the ability to keep up with their insurance. And so getting that fixed means they either can't afford it or they end up having to move. And so just really big shout out to Truman Heritage Habitat for being such a fantastic community partner and for doing what's important, which is prevention of people being displaced. I am a delighted yes on this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number one? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number one passes seven in favor, zero opposed.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number one passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to resolution 25794. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve 25794.
We've got a motion for 25794. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Question for our interim city manager. Just trying to understand, and you're, from your perspective, the need for this, if there is a need for it, what, what we, how we currently do this, you know, and would perhaps, depending on that, I might make a motion for amendment, so...
The short answer to your question is this is work that's already being done in the Community Development Department and by that staff. Tom Skinnell is here to get into the ins and outs of details, and he's happy to dive into weeds of that question if you want to, but this is work that's basically part of process to date.
So, if this is already being done, then this would be a duplicate effort on our part?
It's work that's being performed by staff, yes.
Okay. Well, then, if it's already being done, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't make an amendment to this. In section one, it says that the city manager is hereby directed to verify, and I would like to move to amend that to say that the applicant is hereby directed to verify.
Okay.
If I get a second, I'll speak to that.
Second. Okay. Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I just, you know, on a lot of our TIF districts, our CIDs, things of that nature, we ask the applicant to confirm, you know, to mail out items, or even on zoning, some zoning changes and things, we ask the applicant to confirm that those people, the other participants in the TIF or the CID are being, you know, have been noticed, have been served about the change that's being proposed. And it just seems to me that instead of the adding additional burden maybe onto the city staff, they would be better to just let the applicant indicate that they've been contacted, and they've been, and that everybody is licensed that's in that particular area, and then they can provide that notification to our community development staff who can then easily confirm it. So, that would be my motion.
Okay. So, city councilor, I want to make sure, Councilmember, do you have an actual wording of that so we can restate it for the record?
Just removing the word "city manager" and saying, adding the word "applicant."
Okay. So, striking the word "city manager" and adding the word "applicant" in the resolution?
Correct.
I don't see any concerns with that. What I'm hearing is that this is going to then put that at least initial burden on the applicant, recognizing that staff, as they do currently, is still going to then verify that.
Right.
So, yeah, that makes sense.
Any further discussion on the amendment? We have a motion and a second for the amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the amendment, as presented, is in fact accepted, and I may ask the city councilor just one more time for clarification for the record to restate the amendment as you understand it, so...
So, because, as I understand it, this work is already being done by staff, this amendment, instead of putting it again on staff, puts that first layer of verification on the applicant to provide that information to staff to make their job easier.
And striking the word "city manager" and putting in there the word "applicant" in the resolution as we, as we see it, and what section is that? Is it?
Section one.
In section one. Very, very good. Okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted to absolutely make clarity on that for the record. All right. Seeing no other further discussion, the amendment passes. We now are on, back on 25794. Any further discussion on resolution 25794? Councilmember Stewart, this is your item. Do you have any follow-up thoughts before we wrap up the voting?
I just want to, the whole point of this was just to make sure that before any of these ever come to us, that these businesses are licensed. Licensed. And I don't want to really throw anybody under the bus, but we have a first reading tonight on the agenda for one of these type of incentives where the business owner's not licensed, and it's, so it's already gotten to us. So, that's what I'm trying to avoid. I don't want it coming to us unless all the business owners are licensed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25794? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25794.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 25794 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That takes us to our regular agenda. And we have a full public hearing. I'll open that public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code relating to the community gardens. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. This is a UDO amendment pertaining to community gardens. Back in 2011, the city council amended the UDO to add the regulations pertaining to community gardens. At that time, the, or the current regulations do allow for a storage building to be located on the community garden property. That can be used for the storage of tools and equipment to be used in association with the community garden. This amendment would allow for that building that is located on community gardens to be used for other activities associated with the community gardens, things like educational activities that would benefit the community. This UDO amendment was considered by the Planning Commission at their September 9th meeting, and they recommended in favor of this amendment. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from the council? Okay. This is a full public hearing. If there's no questions, I will call this three times for folks to come forward and talk, if they'd like to, on this item. If you'd like to come forward and talk, forward and talk about this UDO, this is a full public hearing, so anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? The floor is yours. Second time, anyone want to come forward and speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? And use the microphone there, right there, please, if you would please, and please state your name and address.
My name is Sisat Teyyidci. I live at 3260 Shore Avenue. Do you want me to give you my position while I work? I work here.
If you, you don't have to. Just name and address is perfectly fine, and go ahead and talk about the, if you're in favor or opposed to it, or...
Okay. My family is police officers for Independence. I need speed bumps in our neighborhood at 326 East Shore Avenue. We need speed bumps really bad. People race up and down the street. I have the officers called 20 times each day. My uncle is Uncle Prince of the...
Well, ma'am...
Mayor, I don't believe this is...
Right. This is, this is a full public hearing regarding the UDO in regards to the community garden. If you would like to talk to me privately about, after the meeting, I'll be happy to discuss that, but you have to talk about the item that's in before the council right now on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Final call. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, for the community garden that's on the agenda right now? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the full public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-092, second reading and ordinance, amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to the community gardens. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25092? Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 25092 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to a full public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code relating to Arts District signage. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This amendment to the UDO pertains to the Arts District. Back in 2010, the city council approved the amendment to the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, to add the Arts District into the UDO. At that time, the Arts District did not allow electronic message center signs within that district, despite electronic message center signs being allowed everywhere else in the city. Fast forward to 2021, the city amended the electronic message center signs to modernize the language and regulations in there to comply with best practices. So, essentially, this UDO amendment would allow electronic message center signs to be allowed within the Arts District as it is in all the other zoning districts throughout Independence. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their September 9th meeting. The Planning Commission recommended in favor of this amendment, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. This is also a full public hearing. Well, does anyone on the council have any questions? Mr. Skinnell? This is an easy one, Mr. Skinnell. You like these, don't you?
I like them.
Yeah. Very, very good. Any further discussion? Okay. This is a full public hearing, and I will call you to come forward and speak on the lights for the Arts District or signage, the electronic signage for the Arts District. So, anyone want to come forward and speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Calling once. And fellow scouts, this is a great question tonight, later to ask this question. Why do we call it three times? So, that's a good one to ask Councilmember Fears when you come and have pizza.
Tell them the truth, Councilman Fears.
Second call. Anyone in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? I don't see anybody coming forward. Third call. Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? With seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-093, a second reading and ordinance, amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code to allow electronic message signs in the Arts District. Second reading.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on 25093? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25093 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This is also a full public hearing, and Madam City Clerk, please proceed, and I'll open this public hearing.
A public hearing on a petition for the addition of property to the Nolan Road Community Improvement District. Full public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Martin with Gilmore &amp; Bell. I serve as Economic Development Council to the city. What you have before you in this public hearing is with respect to the Nolan Road Community Improvement District. It is a request to expand that district by the addition of one property that is located at the southwest corner of 23rd and Nolan Road. By way of reminder, this is a fairly large community improvement district that runs along the Nolan Road corridor from about Truman Road on the north end to 40 Highway on the south end. It imposes a sales tax in order to pay for certain corridor public improvements. We have representatives from the district here if you have any specific questions about the reasoning for this request, and I can also take any questions you might have for me.
Anyone have any questions for, please proceed.
Thank you very much. Just making sure, this building that we're adding in, is there a going concern there? There's no business currently in the building you're talking about?
So, that's, I'll ask Mr. Skinnell to help me out with that question.
Good evening. Yes, there is one existing business in that, in that building. They recently, within the last couple of weeks, obtained their business license. It had remained vacant for a number of years. Also, towards the end of September, they got the energized permit, meaning that the power was turned back on to that property. Otherwise, besides that, it's been vacant for a number of years.
And just so that everybody knows what we're talking about, this is the tiny building that was next to the Cotman Transmission. They've knocked down Cotman, and they've knocked down the Tattoo Building at that corner of 23rd and Nolan. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Very, very good. This is a full public hearing. Again, I will go through the process again three times. Anyone want to come forward and speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? And Mr. Moore, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Moore. I'm an attorney with Rouse Fred's White Goss Gentile Roads Law Firm located in Kansas City. I am here this evening speaking on behalf of the Nolan Road Community Improvement District. I can provide a little bit additional information on why this annexation is proceeding at this, at this point. As Councilmember McCandless noted, the district has already acquired and cleared two pieces of property at that, at that corner, the Cotman Transmission Building, and then the, what we refer to as the Tattoo Shop next to it. With this piece of property remaining, it gave us a thought, us being the district board of directors, a thought of what, what would it be like if we could acquire that piece of property and clear that entire corner, that entire intersection? Mr. Winship, who is the executive director of the district, is here this evening, and could certainly speak to this if you had any questions, but he's had some conversations with the owner. The owner is, is in agreement with that, hence the, the annexation into the district. We cannot actually enter into any firm negotiations until the property is in the district, because, as you know, a community improvement district cannot spend money outside of its district boundaries. So, the, the hope here is that you would approve the annexation of this single piece of property. We would quickly enter into a negotiation with the property owner for the acquisition of that, of that building and the, and the property surrounding it. And the expectation then would be that I believe the board would order then the demolition of that property. We'd then have the entire corner that we could assemble and do something with in the future.
Any further questions? Please proceed.
So, you have a tenant in that building at the moment?
I don't know if there's an actual tenant in there or if it's the owner that's, that's actually in there. When, when we acquire it, it will be, it will be a vacant building.
Okay. So you would have a plan for the tenant that's in there? If it's a tenant or the owner, they would be moved to a different location, and you would plan to demolish it so you can acquire an entire piece to develop?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. This is still a full public hearing. We've had one call for anyone who want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only. That's the second call. We will do the third and final call. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only on the CID annexation or expansion on this particular property on Nolan Road? Anyone else? Okay. With that, I will close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero nine seven, first reading, an ordinance approving a petition to add property to the Nolan Road Community Improvement District, first reading.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on twenty-five zero nine seven? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, first reading. Thank you very much. Okay. With that, that takes us to our ordinances, and Madam City Clerk, please proceed with twenty-five zero eight nine.
Twenty-five dash zero eight nine, second reading, an ordinance amending Article six of Chapter eight and Article four of Chapter twenty of the Independent City Code pertaining to the adoption of a revised procurement policy, second reading.
Any discussion on twenty-five zero eight nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
A question for the interim city manager. It talks about in here in the cover sheet about, in subsection E three, removes a local labor preference policy under certain circumstances. Can you tell me what those certain circumstances would be?
Sure. Our existing policy has a statement in there that projects over $300,000 need to be awarded to a contractor that has a state-recognized apprenticeship program. This, the striking of that language is simply being done to align with other municipalities in the metro area. We are the only municipality that has this language in there. We've checked with, well, I say, we've checked with Kansas City, Blue Springs, Lee Summit, Green Valley, pretty much all of our surrounding adjacent cities, and again, have found this to be out of line with every other entity. So, just trying to align that, and then as we already have the prevailing wage language in procurement policy, felt we were covered in that area.
So basically, it would remove the apprenticeship requirement? I'm sorry, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think with the lack of people that are going into trades these days and the fact that we need more of them, I think this is a good policy for us to have, so for that, I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
For the interim city manager, has this particular policy caused us issues or has it resulted in us having to pay more for anything in the last year or two years, whatever timeframe?
It has on a couple of occasions at least. I can give you an example in our most current construction contracts that are currently ongoing for the Justice Center and the Municipal Commons. For the demolition portion of that, the contractor that had the apprenticeship program versus the contractor that did not was significantly higher than the one that did not. And then, we did have to do some additional mitigation and ended up getting price quotes again for some additional work. And that work also came, now, it wasn't at that same threshold, so this rule didn't come into play, but the price difference between the two places that actually provided us a bid was roughly $40,000 difference.
So having this provision in there has cost us quite a bit in, in recent years on a strapped budget, so, all right, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. I've given quite a bit of thought to this proposal. If you look at federal investments, state investments, we invest really heavily in people who are older than sixty-five, if you look at the percentages of budgets that go there. We haven't done so much in the realm of youth, especially youth employment. So for me, since this has an apprenticeship program that helps young people move on to jobs in the trades, for me, I'll be voting yes, or I'll be voting no on this, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay. Very, very good. Seeing no further discussion on twenty-five zero eight nine. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
No.
Councilmember Stewart? I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you.
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
No.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Vought?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. And this item fails. One in favor, six opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero nine zero. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero nine zero, second reading, an ordinance exempting the City of Independence from temporary extended hours for selling, serving, and allowing consumption of intoxicating liquor within the City of Independence during the 2026 FIFA World Cup, second reading.
Any discussion on this item? Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you. Interim city manager, could you just outline for people who are listening how long this ordinance lasts, what sorts of restrictions there are, and what kind of hours? What sort of hours we are proposing?
Sure. Actually, I will ask our community and economic development director, Tom Skinnell, to come forward, but I can tell you that while he's making his way up here, that this is opting out of a state change that would allow for the selling of alcohol twenty-three hours of the day. So this simply lets us stay at our current hours through the duration of the World Cup event, but...
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Yeah, so this is House, or the Missouri Legislature passed the ordinance to allow for the expanded license, and so this would, this exemption, this opt-out essentially would revert back to our normal liquor license hours from June eleventh through July nineteenth of twenty-six. So this is just a temporary opt-out in regards to how the Missouri Legislature passed that legislation.
And can you clarify for people who may not be spending their lives in alcohol establishments, what those hours actually are?
So they, so they vary, but for like restaurants and taverns, generally, they close at one or one-thirty. So instead of being open twenty-three hours a day, they're closing at one-thirty or earlier. Restaurants do, I think it's also one-thirty packaged liquor establishment. I think pretty much all the liquor licenses shut down at about one-thirty in the morning.
And they open up at one time?
I think it's eight AM.
Okay. That ought to be plenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else have other further discussion on twenty-five zero nine zero? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five zero nine zero.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero nine zero passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero nine one. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero nine one, second reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction easements for the Fairmount Loop Project, project number one-one-two-five-zero-one, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on twenty-five zero nine one? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero nine one passes five, excuse me, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero nine four. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero nine four, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant for $2,500 from the Missouri Department of Conservation to remove invasive honeysuckle at George Owens National Park, I'm sorry, Nature Park, second reading.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on twenty-five zero nine four cursing the honeysuckle at George Owens Nature Park? Seeing no further discussion on that. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And hopefully, we will not have to deal with the honeysuckle at George Owens Park in the future. That brings us to twenty-five zero nine five. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero nine five, second reading, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance one-nine-five-six-one, second reading.
Any discussion on twenty-five zero nine five? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero nine five passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to twenty-five zero nine six. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero nine six, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of an agreement with the City of Sugar Creek, Missouri for Independence Police to provide dispatching services for an annual fee and allocating that fee to a special revenue account to support related communications expenses, appropriating the necessary funds and authorizing future change orders and appropriations for the same project, second reading.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on twenty-five zero nine six?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McCandless is recognized right now. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Interim city manager, could you speak to the fact, so, so dollars are coming from Sugar Creek to cover the costs of the increased staffing that we're going to need? Have we been able to locate that staffing?
We have not, and I did speak with our interim chief earlier about, just to verify that on, you know, from their perspective, do we have the capacity to absorb these calls? And while we are down nearly fifty percent staffing, this is a constant issue with that group, I believe, as was mentioned earlier, but that we do have the capability to absorb the volume of calls from Sugar Creek at this time.
If you've ever been to the nine-one-one center, it is a near miracle to watch them do their magic. Are we going to increase our recruiting opportunities? What happens if we are overwhelmed? I just want to be sure that we have a plan in place to adjust this.
I would like to call interim chief Brinkley to the stand to discuss this with you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thought I was going to get out of this one. To answer your question, we are pretty confident, we wouldn't be moving forward if we didn't actually coordinate with the dispatching staff. They provided an analysis of the call volume, and they're confident that we can handle that. I have, I do have a meeting this week with the HR director to talk about ways we can actually expand our capacity as far as recruiting effort. Can we have more social media visibility? Are there anything else we can do as far as recruiting? Gentlemen, earlier, that took us podium and actually doing the comment section, I stated that we have five new employees actually within, within the training program. They should be off of their training and fully operational by March or April of the next year. Now, I know that's a couple of months in advance, but we're doing everything we can to fill those vacancies as quick as possible. This is something that dispatch centers throughout the nation are dealing with as far as vacancies, but I think we need to look at creative ways to actually recruit and hire new people, but we're trying everything we can and will continue to do.
Thank you very much.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you. When we first started through this process, we had, we were approached by Sugar Creek, City of Sugar Creek, and we were being good partners to see what, if we had the capacity to do so. And at those very beginning stages, working with the local bargaining unit, CWA, there was one of the first things that we did, get that checked off the list, make sure that their people are comfortable, work agreements are in place, and we have the capacity to do so.
Yes. I would say we do. I do recognize that we do have a staffing shortage, and we're going to do everything we can to get in, but I was sure that they can handle that capacity.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other discussion? Please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
City, interim city manager, it, this does not include fire dispatch for, for Sugar Creek, is that correct?
That's correct. This is police dispatching only. It's my understanding that fire will be handled by Lee Summit.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Interim city manager, how many, do you have any dispatchers Sugar Creek has currently?
I do not.
I believe it's one, one.
Oh, they just have one?
Yes.
Okay. Was there going to be any, I mean, I'm assuming that person knows that they're, the offer stands for them to apply, correct? I was just curious if we could bring some of theirs over, but if they only have one, I'm not really sure. Anyway, okay, that, do you know if that person is represented by a union?
I am not aware of the, no, no, no.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on twenty-five zero nine six?
I'm not sure who this goes to. I just, how long is training for a dispatcher?
I'm not sure the exact timeframe, but it takes a little while for them to actually go through the training. They have shadows that go with them as well, too, and normally, they kind of progress through call-taking, nine-one dispatch, fire, and then police, the police dispatch. The police dispatch is the most complicated one because of the call volume, but it normally takes, I'm going to guess, about six to eight months to get fully operational. The five trainees that I spoke of now, they're actually in like week four or five, and they won't be finishing, like I said, until April of May, March, April of next year. So it takes a little while to get proficient. It's a difficult job. I think it's one of the most difficult jobs we have in public safety.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have other further questions or discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five zero nine six.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero nine six passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero nine eight, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant in the amount of $8,000 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for the Police Department for Work Zone Enforcement from July one, 2024 to December thirty-first, 2025, authorizing future change orders and/or extensions for the same project and making the necessary appropriations, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero nine nine, first reading, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, which was approved by ordinance number one-nine-six-eight-two, first reading. Twenty-five dash one-zero-zero, first reading, an ordinance amending Article fifteen of Chapter four rental-ready program to amend the effective date of the licensing requirement for utility turn-on, first reading. Twenty-five dash one-zero-one, first reading, an ordinance amending the Independent City Code, Section five-point-zero-one-point-zero-zero-two, definitions related to businesses, first reading. Twenty-five dash one-zero-two, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission as part of the Twenty-third Street M-seventy-eight Highway Complete Streets Phase Three Project, project number one-one-two-one-one-one-dash-three slash federal project number CRP-dash-three-three-seven-nine Number CRP-3379 (447), first reading.
Thank you, and that brings us to council member comments. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to give a shout out to a couple of our staff. I had a chance to ride along with Animal Control Officer Heather Ury, was very eye-opening experience, and just to, just wanted to say appreciate that. Also rode along with our environmental team in, from the Health Department, Travis Pearl, to look at our food service, you know, inspections and that process. Both were very, very helpful, very interesting, and I just wanted to tell them I appreciate the time they spent with me. And then lastly, we did have a chance to commission, see some new police officers and support staff commissioned in, at the Police Department. For last, that was good experience, and we're anxious to have those folks on board, so we appreciate that. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fears. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to say that, isn't it cool that our airport is now named the Harry S. Truman Terminal? I think that's pretty cool. Last week, the Kansas City City Council voted for this great honor for a president from Independence. What a way to celebrate our local history, and that puts independence on the map now, right? Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Oh, Councilmember Wiley, please, I had you on my list, but I had Councilmember McCandless first, so you're both on the list, trust me.
I just wanted to also give a staff shout out. We have had some great adoption numbers for the last two weeks. We had 22 last week, and the following week we had 29 animals adopted. We also, our staff organized a transfer of 15 dogs from our shelter to a shelter in Arkansas. I'm really thrilled that this happened. Sometimes dogs do better in a new city where, you know, maybe huskies move better or shepherds move better, so they were able to transfer 15 dogs out. Great news. So we are in a more comfortable position right now. I mean, you know, we'll have more animals show up, I'm sure, but it has allowed the staff to breathe a little bit. I'm really proud of the work they do. They, they are doing adoption events every weekend and really working hard to move animals out of our shelter, so I want to thank them because it's not easy. And then we've also had some animals abandoned at our shelter recently. And I just want to remind people that if you, if you want to surrender your animal, it's, you need to make an appointment, and one of the reasons is because the more we know about your animal, the better chance we'll have to get them adopted. If we, if you can tell us if they're cat-friendly, dog-friendly, the more we know, the better we'll do with your animal. So please make an appointment. And then lastly, please spay and neuter your dogs. We're still behind, and there's still an animal crisis, and there are, there are ways to spay-neuter if you can't afford it. Email me, and I can help you find ways to get that done. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wiley. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you. A couple of items. I was invited to Summit Point Baptist Church for their 100-year anniversary, and it was delightful for them to include us in that. I want to say appreciation to Jean and Rita, Cory and Robert, who have been in the Citizens Academy, learning all kinds of aspects of the city. I was lucky enough to get to join the Police Citizens Academy, and so I'm still going through that on Thursdays. I'm gonna make a pitch for both of these. If you want to learn more about how your city operates, really think about going to school on Thursday nights for a couple of weeks just to learn where poop goes, where your water comes from, how your officers work. It's just really quite an excellent education. I have to take a moment to recognize my friend, Deacon Ross Bedoin, who was known to many people in this city as really a servant leader. He was a deacon at St. Mark's Parish and touched a lot of lives, and he passed recently, and his funeral was attended by hundreds of people whose lives were changed by him. So if you knew him, send up a prayer for his well-being, for his family. He was a very good man. I just wanted to also give an update on the Subcommittee for Search for the City Manager. As you recall, this body approved an RFP with a set of criterion that we use to grade the proposals that came in. We had 13 search firms submit proposals with a variety of applicability to the city. We graded each one of those on a 100-point scoring matrix. The top of the grouping were really excellent proposals, but two of them rose to the top as finalists. Those two finalists were invited to give a presentation to the members of the search committee, although those interviews are available. They were done in open session, so they're, they're on our YouTube channel if you would like to watch their presentations. Each of those was scored on a 50, 50-point scoring matrix, both by the members of the council who were on that committee, as well as several staff members. And then this evening, we had a special meeting to be able to allow the council to ask any additional questions of the ones that the Subcommittee unanimously recommended. The good news is that that committee, or the full council, agreed with our recommendation to bring SGR forward as the search firm. The entire proposal will be available as an information-only item on the next agenda, so you can read about their recommendations. And as I said, the interviews are public, so you can certainly review those if you would like to. Their next step will be to come to the city and interview department heads, meet with community members, take input from additional staff, and from that, they will craft a brochure that helps us advertise our position for city manager. They will post it in many locations so that we can attract an excellent set of candidates. Those candidates will have a period of time to submit their resumes. From there, we will select a group of finalists, and eventually the entire board will interview, excuse me, the entire council will interview those finalists and make a recommendation. So I just want to continue to keep this top of mind for you, that we haven't forgotten, and that Lisa will eventually get a reprieve from being interim city manager at some point. But we are moving with careful deliberation, and we'll continue to keep you apprised of the steps. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, this Saturday, coming up on the 25th, Independent Square Association is holding a ribbon-cutting for the first phase of the downtown streetscape completion. Representative Cleaver should be there. I don't know if you've heard, there's a kerfuffle in Washington, so he may have to bolt out and go back. So he's a, he's a definite maybe, but we will have our new county executive, LaVota, to be there. It'll be a nice celebration for one milestone under our belt. Four o'clock, four o'clock, and we'll meet at the Truman statue in the front there.
Very good. Thank you, council member. And also, this Saturday is the Halloween Parade on the square. I believe it starts traditional time as 10:00 a.m., is that correct? So have your bags of candy and your costumes, and they do not throw things from the vehicles that pass by, so have to be safe, and people typically walk and give you items, so it is a great event. Also, I have an apology here. Good evening. I want to sincerely apologize for my comments remarking cargo largo on the October 7th City Council meeting. Ironically associated cargo largo with an unrelated matter which unfairly, which unfairly represented cargo largo. Cargo largo is a valued business on Noel Road since 1986. It is one of our largest private employers and one of our largest tax contributors. They have met all conditions of their development and have fulfilled their obligations at the railroad crossing, including paying for its design and its construction estimate. I regret suggesting they should cease operations, and I am committed to making sure they have continued success in our community, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to share that with you. With that, madam inters, madam interim city manager, the floor is in fact yours.
Thank you. Such a mouthful. We have to shorten this somehow. I just want one housekeeping item. The procurement policy item that was before you this evening, just to let you know, by and large, most of that was cleanup that does still need to come back, so when you see that immediately following on an agenda, I just didn't want to be surprised. That was, it's cleaning up items that were approved in the summer that didn't, that made it in the policy but not the ordinance. So again, that, that housekeeping piece still needs to be taken care of.
Okay.
And that's all.
Very, very good. Anyone else other items? With that being-
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd make a motion that we move to a closed executive session under Section 610-021-1. Is that right? Legal, legal matters?
Thank you very much. Do we need a second for that, Mr. Clover?
Yes, sir.
We've got a motion and a second, and then any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and we will move into executive session, and do I adjourn the regular meeting?
No, don't, don't adjourn. We'll do that following the executive session.
And we'll come back here and adjourn.
That, that's your preference, yes.
Thank you very much.
Then the executive session will be, will be in a-
Will be in a?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure seeing you Thursday, buddy.
Pleasure seeing you Thursday, boy.
All right. We have concluded the executive session, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We've got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for adjourned the executive session, and adjourn the meeting tonight for the City Council meeting, and I don't know if we can do both of those together, we just need to adjourn the...
Just one adjournment is all you need.
Just one adjournment, so, seeing no further discussion, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Five in favor, zero opposed, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.